Garvin.
Come on.
I'm reading two lines at once here. Diane Garvin, are you here? Landry Zebra.
I'm here.
Donna Kaiser?
Here.
Jessica Maple?
Present.
All right, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five of approval of the past minutes, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Um, we're missing item three. Or sorry, item four.
Oh, pardon me, thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Gorman, second by Kaiser. Any discussion? Any additions, everything good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, okay, item five, pardon me. Approval of the minutes, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion too.
We have a motion by Zebra.
I second.
Second by Bauer. Any discussion? Okay. Go ahead.
The two new board members should abstain.
Yep, I was gonna say we can abstain from the fifteenth, yep.
So he shouldn't second that.
I, so if you're not at the meeting, our general policy has been for you to abstain from the.
No problem.
Okay, so we. Which one did he?
He did the second.
He did the second.
Second, okay, which he can, the two, you seconded.
I made the motion.
He made the motion, we might want a different second, we could get that.
I'll second, okay.
Okay, second by Dankowski. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll abstain.
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 Abstain. Okay. To be, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five?
I'll make the motion too.
Motion by Gorman?
I'll second.
Second by Zebra? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Special, item six, special presentation, special education presentation.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you guys. So I'm just coming tonight to kind of, oh, I, okay. I just wanted to present, um, so there's two times a year I come to you, this time of year, so one of the things we have in special education that isn't always well-known, we have a report card just like the schools have a report card. Ours just comes out at a different time and ours has a different name, you know, we have to be unique. So ours is the Joint Federal Notification Packet and this started coming out and this was a federal guideline that states had to figure out a report card for special ed. So back in two thousand eighteen, they really put this together and there's two areas that we are evaluated on as a department. It's the compliance piece and results. And the compliance piece really focuses on how are we doing with our paperwork? Are we hitting our deadlines? Are we doing good evaluations that we're not over identifying kids or having disproportionality and looking at, is one area of special education like SLD or EBD, are we over qualifying in those areas? So some of these areas of compliance that you will see are looked at once every five years because they're looked at in alignment with your self-evaluation because every five years we go through a self-assessment process that looks at how well we're writing IAPs, are we meeting all the guidelines that the federal government is putting in place for us? So as you can see, the ones that are there, um, just for your knowledge and not next school year, the school year after, this will be a very much more in-depth report because that's when we'll be going through self-assessment. So we're two years out. Um, and that's where DeeDee's here too. So thank you for giving her PST role approval because she'll be a vital role in that process and working with me to make sure our paperwork is in alignment and we're ready for that process in two years. But the areas that are really evaluated annually that you look up there, so timely evaluations. We have a responsibility, once we have consent, to do our evaluations within sixty days. So this is annually uploaded to the state, they look at how well you are doing and meeting those timelines. Um, the other next two are really just, hey, are you doing, those are special reports depending on age level that we have to submit for each student that fall into that age grade level category. Then the last one is just are all of our other reports done on time and submitted to the state? The compliance piece, this is where on an annual basis, they really look at how are we doing graduation and dropout rates? The state assessment, so we actually get scored twice on this, was our participation rate? And then how are our students performing on the state assessment? Then that last piece, what it means, the environmental placement. This federal government has really made a push to say, how are students with disabilities being included in the classroom? And gain access to that tier one curriculum, then getting their SDI? So you get scored on how many students are accessing the general education curriculum? And if you are pulling out too much and saying, nope, we're gonna do something separate, things like that, that's the environmental piece. They look at the code to say, how much are you actually having students involved in the gen ed classroom? Um, looking at our scores, so this was one of the things when I actually first started in the district that I started looking at, how are we doing? Um, and as you can see, compliance, because the max points you can get for compliance is fourteen points. So we are pretty consistent in turning in paperwork, making sure we're doing those things, which is great. That's a baseline you really wanna be good at because those, to me, you're controlling your controllables and those are easy points for us to get. Um, as you can see, the max you can get for results is sixteen points. And we're hovering between that nine to eleven points. So that's some of the areas where we can make improvements. So really looking at the results, where we are losing some of our points. Um, right now, our participation rate on our last, our most recent report card, we were at a seventy-six percent participation rate of our students with disabilities taking the state assessment. So one of the things we're really trying to work with families to help them understand by taking that assessment because, you know, they're like, are we stressing our students with disabilities out by taking that? But you think about it, as we prepare them for post-secondary, at the mill, you have to take a standardized assessment to get a job at the mill. There are different places that do that. You know, for us, yes, we wanna see students do well, but we also want them to get that experience. So when they go to a job or they go to post-secondary, that's not the first time they're taking a high-stakes assessment because there is a routine and behavior to how do I take that assessment and think critically? So we wanna get that information out to say, yes, it is your choice if you wanna opt out, but let's think about long-term and what's the benefit of them taking and knowing their accommodations? So they can advocate for them when they do have to take it at a later time in life, depending on their job or their career path. Um, the other one too that we're losing some points on, the state assessment, how we're performing. We are performing in many areas close or above the state average, but I think we can do better because right now, one of the things I'm looking at and reading at math, we're using a variety of different resources at each of the buildings. So I'm trying to do work to get alignment, P twelve in those resources. Um, another one that I just wanna let you know, like, we're fighting this across the state since this report card came out, the graduation rates. So due to our numbers, you know, students with disabilities make up a small amount. Some of our students go to what's called Project Search, which is a vocational program where they go for a year, learn job skills, and that's what some of our students need. But even though they're still working towards their goals, it, they are counted as graduating in five years instead of four, and that counts against us even though those are our students getting what they need. So it counts against our graduation rate and we as a state organization are trying to fight that with the state to say, how do we work to communicate to the federal government? We're giving students what they need. So for me, I get that's why our graduation rate, we lost some points every year because we have students going to get what they need. And that's a knock right now until they change that rule. I'm willing to take that knock. I'm not gonna stop providing services to what students need just to get that number up. Um, and then environmental codes, as I've talked to you at our last meeting, um, in instructional programs, we're working on that code teaching model and what that looks like to say, how are we working towards those environmental codes? And then the last piece here, these are just some of the things that I just talked about of how we're taking steps to make improvements. But for parents, like I said, I really hope being with parent-teacher conferences next year to have some special ed learning sessions for families, not just an education to this, but we also have confusion sometimes around, okay, my child has a medical disability. Do they qualify for an educational disability? What's the difference between the two and how do we work through that? So these are some of the things that are just gonna help us work towards our special ed report card. Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Item seven, student board report that was given last.
Yep.
Gone, thanks to thank them, see them next year. Item eight is the public forum, first of all, thank you for everybody coming. Public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number wishing to participate is identified. Jack, any, any? Okay. Takes care of that, thank you. All right, item nine, consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled out or did everything pass with consent?
Everything passed with consent.
Okay, I will seek a motion then to accept consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kaiser?
I'll second.
Second by Nest? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, discussion and possible decision approval monthly voucher list? Any discussion? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. I will be abstaining from one of the checks which I said. I do a motion for it, please?
Yep, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Nest?
I'll second.
Second by Gorman? Roll call vote.
Paul Nowinski?
Yes, with one abstention.
So that noted, Derek Nest?
Yes.
David Bauer?
Yes.
Diane Borman?
Yes.
Landry Zebra?
Yes.
Donna Kaiser?
Yes.
Jessica Maple?
Yes.
Megan Stankowski?
Yes.
The motion carries. Item eleven, discussion and possible decision acceptance of monthly treasures report? Any discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Got a motion by Gorman?
I'll second.
Second by Nest? Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Derek Nest?
Yes.
David Bauer?
Yes.
Diane Borman?
Yes.
Landry Zebra?
Yes.
Donna Kaiser?
Yes.
Jessica Maple?
Yes.
Megan Stankowski?
Yes.
Paul Nowinski?
Yes, motion carries. Item twelve, new business. Uh, twelve one, discussion and possible, uh, decision on the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar adjustment, Greg?
Yeah, we, uh, with the move to the hundred and eighty-eight day calendar from the hundred and ninety calen, a hundred and ninety day calendar, we had to make an adjustment to the school calendar for next year, uh, for two, uh, staff days. It is administration's recommendation that we convert April sixth, uh, which is more commonly probably referred to as Easter Monday. It was scheduled as an in-service day, convert that to a no-school day for, uh, staff as well as students. Uh, and then, uh, possibly look at moving May twenty-second to a half-day for kids and a half-day for staff. And then, uh, the staff would not have to return on May twenty-sixth for an in-service day. So those would be the two days that we would, uh, capture back to get to the one hundred and eighty-eight day calendar.
Any discussion?
The only question I, I, we try to get away from half-days because I fear, especially with the last day, um, parents working, um, kids going home to an empty house, a lot of times parents will forget. Um, so it was great, um, not to say the half-days come back, but if we have to, I'm just forewarning that that could be an issue.
With blessing.
Well, but, but the parents, again, you know, because they, everybody's working, they're going home to an empty house.
How many years has it been since we have not done half-days?
Uh, probably two years, or two years.
It's our first year?
Probably first year.
This is our first year.
Greg, what is your opinion?
It doesn't, I don't think it really matters for administration, I think we just tried to find the least obtrusive days.
Right.
As a parent guy, I like the full days, the half-days are kind of.
Well, it could be confusing because we don't really do half-days anymore.
But it's also Labor Day weekend.
Memorial Day.
Or Memorial, sorry. Memorial Day weekend and a lot of people, all their kids, all look for Memorial Day anyway.
And that's the last day of school, right?
Right.
So that would be kind of a special, right, right, like the last day of school.
And it's our only half-day of the year.
Right, the only half-day we'd have in the calendar, right?
Yep.
Yep. I think that parents could probably make. It will obviously take a lot of communication, uh, on administration's part in March, April, and May with all the, uh, weekly or monthly newsletters that go out by each building, uh, we can also include it in the link, that last issue of the link too.
It's got word words.
Yeah.
I'm seeking a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar adjustment by Nest?
Second.
Second by Bauer? Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve point two, discussion and possible decision, process to fill the vacant board seat. Greg?
Obviously, we have a vacant board seat, uh, so, uh, the first step in the process is the board needs to decide if you wish to fill it. There's no rule or law that you have to. Uh, it's just, uh, the va, the seat can sit vacant until the next election. Um, uh, in which case then the person, the, and the interested individual would run on the, uh, belief that they would finish out the remainder of that term and then go on, be back on the normal cycle of when that seat is up for reelection. Or the board can, uh, decide to fill it, uh, so I have included attachment here that is the process to fill the board vacancy. To basically, if we scroll down a little bit further, there you go, a little further, there you go. The basic premises of filling it is we would advertise it, uh, uh, on different, uh, mediums, probably, you know, word of mouth, it says, social media, uh, probably put it in the paper. You know, social media is probably the most effective way of doing it right now. Uh, leave it open for however long the board to decide, uh, the individuals need to submit a letter of re, uh, interest or a notice of interest, and then the board has the right to interview all interested candidates. And then, uh, from there, so I have been a part of this process before, so if, uh, if the board decides to fill it, I can, if you request, I can provide some insight in how I've done this in the past. But, uh, it's up to the board how they wanna move this forward.
And this is an at-large seat?
Correct.
So I mean, it's not a specific area, um, where the person has to be from.
Correct.
And if I'm not mistaken, have we ever not filled the board vacancy?
Not that I recall. No.
We've had vacancies, we've had to interview and go through the process.
And we've always filled them, correct? Okay.
So this particular seat has one year left, so the person would have to run again if they so choose to.
It'd be a one-year.
It'd be a one-year term.
Yep.
They would be appointed and then they could run it a one-year term as an incumbent and then they'd have to return if they desire the next year again. So they'd end up running two years in a row, I believe, you only have one year left, right, Calandra? So they'd have to run in April to fill that last year and then they run again the next April for a three-year term.
And Calandra resigned on April fifteenth, the last board day?
She resigned the twenty-seventh, the day before the reorg.
Oh, okay, okay. So then technically we have just a little over a month.
To fill it.
Right, so I mean, if, if, yeah, sixty days, so twenty-eighth, so theoretically, if you would do a timeline and said, let's fill it, um, I have to get to a calendar here, my recommendation would be, today's the twentieth. Um, I would probably say you would, uh, post it through, I don't know, this, well, the next board meeting is the seventeenth? No.
Yep.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Okay. So you could close the, the, uh, whatever by the twelfth, close the, the application period on the, the eleventh. And then as we release board packets on the twelfth, we could have the information of the candidates that expressed interest to you in your board packet on the twelfth and we could interview the night of the seventeenth and make the selection. But I've done it where we've interviewed, that's how the meeting started, is we interviewed candidates, made the selections, swore them in, and then they actually sat that night at the ele, at the meeting. Or you could hold a special meeting to do it as well.
How long do interviews typically take?
Not long, I mean, you know, it's not like it's a, uh, I, when I've done it, it's, it's typically three or four questions. It's not like it's an elaborate, you're interviewing for a job, we're gonna sit here for an hour and grill you twenty questions.
But there's been many times we, people run unopposed, we don't always get a lot of interest. I mean, it is such a wonderful paid job. Um, any, I, I, we would seek a motion if you wanted either yes to fill it, would be the motion.
I make a motion to.
Kaiser has made the motion to fill it by appointment.
I'll second that.
We have second by Zebra.
Can we extend the sixty days if we wanted to add another thirty to it or is that?
I think you have to change the policy.
Would you have to change the policy?
Change the policy.
You can't change it.
Correct.
Gotta stick with the policy.
And then if it went past that sixty days, then the board president has the right to appoint you and not, I mean, I've been a part of that process too where when it passed the sixty days, the board president appointed somebody.
I think our board has always voted and done the appointment, I think that's what we, we should stay with.
The only, uh, question I would have on that motion is, is timeline, are you, like, what kind of timeline are you looking at? Are you, you know, kind of following what I recommended or do you want a different timeline?
No, I wouldn't do what you recommend.
I think that's what you meant, or your recommendation, your eleven.
I think it's, depends upon the number of applicants you get, maybe you'll get a few.
Yeah.
Um, but then if the intention is, then you can have them, like you said, sworn in, um, as the meeting starts. Um, otherwise, depending upon how long the.
When would we do the interviews because of our committee meetings start at five, we're thinking like four o'clock or?
No, well, we would prob, well, technically, the interviews happen in open session, so it could be the first agenda item on the agenda.
And then they're sworn in right after.
Seventeenth or whatever, eighteenth, whatever that day is, so yeah. We would start that at six o'clock, we'd do interviews, take however long it would take, and then we'd make the decision. The vote has to be done in open session, the vote, it cannot be secretive, uh, it cannot be secret ballot, it has to be publicly reviewed or, or you have to say it out loud.
And we'd have to tell all the applicants, realize that that night you're gonna become a board member.
Yeah, now, to, to Jessica's point, if there gets to be a point where, you know, we, we get, by the sixth of June, I have eight applicants sitting on my desk, maybe then we look and say, hey, maybe we need to hold it, hold it off and have a special meeting on like the nineteenth or something like that.
Even if you have four or five, and I'm just saying that because some people have work schedules that are planned out two to three weeks ahead of time where we can't flex and be here at fifteen hundred.
Well, if there's four applicants and each takes ten minutes, I mean, that's an extra forty minutes already.
Yeah, you're right, this could be, we may have to, depending on the applicants, we may have to have a special board.
Do we have to decide that within the motion or can we discuss that?
No. I don't think you could, the only thing I would ask, well, to Jessica's point, it might be nice to know when we're gonna do the interviews because that way as they submitted their application, I could say to them, please hold June X open at X time for the interview process. That's the only reason I would say that, Calandra, that way I could communicate that date.
Personally, I guess that doesn't really matter to me.
It's really hard to have a special board meeting, especially in the summer.
I plan on being here.
I mean, if, if you're at the regular board meeting, would probably be the best time to do it, unless we get this massive amount, I don't think we've ever had that, have we?
No.
No. And we can get two, three applicants, that'd be great.
What's included on the application then?
Nothing, nothing to submit a letter.
Submit a letter.
And that's it, there's no questions? Is that something we can put in a quote ahead of time just to get a sense?
I don't think we need to.
No, it says the, yeah, all it says they need to do is submit a letter. Yep, and then at some point, uh, we'll obviously have to develop question, interview questions, um, you know, I probably could dig some out from previous lives, uh, and have a handful and then send them out to you guys to get your opinion or, you know, never know what ChatGPT can come up with as well.
So does your motion go along with this timeline?
Yeah.
Okay, and your second, so who's second, so your second goes along with it? Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
One of, okay, motion carries. Item twelve point three, discussion and possible decision, uh, high school math curriculum. I'm the guy that asked him to bring this back. Um, and the reason I did that is, um, our discussions last time were about the legality of DEI, if we lose funding and at the end of April, there were three federal court cases where the ruling was made that the executive orders were ruled unconstitutional and illegal. And that was a big discussion of ours, if we lose our funding. They were done by, here I've got the court cases, they were done by US District Judge in New Hampshire, US District Judge in Maryland, and the US District Judge in Washington DC. Three separate judges ruled it unconstitutional. And that was a big part of our discussion about why we weren't gonna go with this curriculum and I wanted to know if there was any interest in us possibly looking at what we're gonna do with that curriculum.
I guess the only thing I, I look at is we've always governed by Robert's rule, stating that usually the, the party that prevails is one that would bring it back. You'd be more president, that could be, you know, there's always, it's never a law, so you can bring items back, it's just that you could also be creating future issues. Um, the only part that, of this I don't like is the fact there was no information in our board packet about some of the concerns that were raised. Um, I'm not comfortable making a decision based on not seeing anything and just hearing about it tonight. I mean, this is a big cur, it's a curriculum. And I, I think that we should make sure that all of the items that were concerned with the curriculum committee in the past that brought it forward are addressed and, and then look to even bring it back at a future date, but to try to approve it tonight, what you might get is fine, but I, I cannot approve something I'm just gonna do it tonight.
Didn't ask for approval, I just asked for a discussion of it.
Right, but.
But it's posted as possible.
As discussion and decision, right.
I did ask Greg, Greg contacted the Wisconsin Association of School Board to get a ruling on this and what you're stating is if it happens during the same meeting? If you.
No, no, we've done this in the past.
Greg, you got the ruling from the school.
No, no, I know, but in the past, as this board sat, you know, you could have items come back every month if somebody votes, no one, something decides, well, I lost, I'm gonna bring it back next month. You know, you're, you're gonna have reoccurring item constantly coming back and forth. I will bring up everything, but you just don't, you wanna try to send continuity with the board. So it's, I just think that not having the information in, in our packet tonight is, it, it should have been in there, it should have been included, there should have been attachments. I mean, we can discuss it, but to make a decision, you know, as it's posted, I'm just telling you what my.
No, I agree, I respect your opinion. I just asked to put it back because our big obstacle with this was that we were wondering the funding, we asked many administrators how much funding we would lose, if there was a potential, a lot of board members were concerned about it.
Where is that information, where is that information that administrators were asked about that, where's that?
I asked during the meeting, oh, where's, I asked you about how much funding we lose, it was in the meeting. I asked, remember the audience about how much money we lose in the funding?
You're saying in the, in the meeting two months ago?
Uh, two months ago, I asked during that meeting and that was a concern that we discussed. And now we were all wondering, would we lose funding? And so now that we'd had court rulings that say, no, you won't lose funding, I thought it would be a good time for us to possibly bring it back.
But aren't those cases under appeal?
No, there have been no appeal to the Supreme Court from them.
Yet.
Yeah, and that's, that happened in April twenty-fourth.
Yeah, that's not that far.
I'm just, yeah. But a big part of the decision was made about that we were, thought we were gonna lose funding.
Well, there were other concerns as well, I guess for me, what Diane had mentioned, I mean, I feel like it sets a really, you know, a precedent if we're just going to make a decision on something and then at any point, anybody can just bring it back and we can just revote on it if we didn't like the answer. I'm not saying, you know, yes or no to the math curriculum, but the way that, you know, we're going about this doesn't feel like that's our policy.
That is, it's not a policy, that is, you have that right.
So at any time, anybody can bring any.
It's in Robert's rules. It's in Robert's rules, it is, or both, it was by Robert's rules, and the prevailing side can bring it back, not the dissent.
That's only in the exact meeting.
In that meeting, but you can bring it back.
Greg, you wanna send that from the lawyer's side?
I do have a legal opinion, Jessica, that it can come back.
And please share with all of us, Tom, absolutely.
If, if it's the meeting, so if we have a meeting and I voted no on something that didn't pass, and I'm in the majority, and all of a sudden some new information is out, I could bring it back if I was in the majority during that meeting. Anybody can bring any item, any month to the board, and it can happen anytime.
It's correct, that's in.
And we don't have, I mean, we can have a discussion, we don't have.
That's the right here, in the card, that the prevailing side can only bring it back.
That's only for that meeting, according to legal opinion.
That's not what that says, I'm just saying.
I'm, I'm just saying that's not, that's only in that meeting as per the legal opinion I have from the School Board Association.
Okay, then just please share that with everyone.
I am sending it right now.
Well, the thing that bothered me is, we've really set a precedent when we had five teachers spend a lot of time looking at things to pilot them. We never got a chance to really talk about the curriculum. We spent more time talking about if we were going to lose our funding because of issues that weren't even related to the curriculum, I felt. Matter of fact, I called the company, I talked to, uh, what's her name, uh, what, the vice president about what's going on with this DEI, and she, I think she thought I was from Mars. Um, Ebony Jones, her name was, and, and I'm just saying that I was worried that we'd lose curriculum, our money for that, and all of a sudden now, I found out that it's not, thought it'd be a good time to discuss it.
Yeah, I would just add that, I think we voted no on, and I attended the meeting, we voted no on the curriculum because of the DEI, correct? Like, we didn't vote on, it didn't seem like there was a vote specifically on the curriculum.
Nope.
And that's where, I mean, that's where I, I feel like it's a situation a little bit different, but.
It's also because it's based on Common Core, and Common Core is not very successful.
I feel like it would be helpful to get more knowledge on the actual curriculum, because even, I felt um, that I didn't understand when Rob was explaining, I didn't understand, I, I don't know anything about math curriculum, I, and when you're talking about having the information, when that came up, I did not have any of that information either, so, I agree. We should have all had been privy to that information, that it was coming back, um. And, you know, perhaps a more lengthy explanation informing us of what it actually is would be helpful, I know teachers put a lot of time into it, but we don't know what we don't know, so if they could explain it and vote from there.
Well, I think, yes, I think it would be helpful to see, because once we didn't approve it, you know, what have we done since that vote to move forward, number one, number two, what other examples are out there, what other school districts are using, and what have found that they've been very useful or successful with this program? You know, we don't wanna just say yes to a program on no information presented tonight and go forward, it would be nice to see all of these things addressed.
All right, Diane, are you suggesting that we put it on the June agenda?
I, I would say yes.
Do you want a motion to postpone to June?
I would, I would respectfully ask that if the desire is to put this on the motion, Mr. McCarty and some staff are here, I would prefer to just do the presentation right now.
And then raise questions again, and just not make a decision?
If you don't wanna make a decision, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you to make a decision or not to make a decision, I'm just saying there are people here that have brought forward for this purpose, so I would like to at least give them the opportunity to present what they have, that they worked on over the last year.
Tom, are you ready?
If you guys would like.
Go ahead, is that okay with everybody?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, so what I was asked to do was just, I guess recreate the backdrop of why this was brought forward. Um, one thing that, that I thought was, was ignored the first time around was, um, why we started looking at curriculum in the first place. Um, I, I think up here, one thing is, what we were using was very out of date. Um, in, in fact, it, it was over nine years older than the new standards that the state adopted. Um, so, it, uh, it was actually archived by the company that created it, um, you can kinda see, uh, that orange box is the rating of the curriculum that we were using of Engage New York, which turned into Eureka. Um, it, it, because it was outdated to the current standards, um, you, you can see it wasn't expecting the same of what our students should have been expected to do, and, and I, I I would argue that that is probably the, a strong correlation to, to you see the last four years minus um, the anomaly of our strong senior class we have right now, we saw our math scores dipping four years in a row. Um, when you look at our math growth, it was dipping at an even more significant rate, meaning um, our students from their freshman to junior year weren't growing, um, and I, I think you can attribute that to using a curriculum that wasn't expecting the same standard that the test was expecting our students to achieve at. Um, and so they weren't being pushed, um, to the level that they should have been. Um, one of the, the draws to illustrative math is, um, according to data collected by Math Institute of Wisconsin, uh, eighty-five percent of the schools that have adopted it over a three-year period of time um, saw growth in their students moving from prof- uh, basic to proficient, or proficient to advanced. Um, and the average number is about six point nine percent increase for every student. Um, so there is a success rate, um, the, the top math school in, uh, Wisconsin Whitefish Bay uses this. Um, so it, it is being used by successful schools, um. And that's just the context of why the curriculum conversation around math at the high school started in the first place. Um, this was shared with you, I, I just shared it back, um, this is the timeline, uh, the, the process that was went through, um, the math department got together to talk about where were the holes in our curriculum, where were the shortfalls, uh, created a rubric, identified materials that they wanted to look at, um. They evaluated those materials, um, after evaluating all of the materials, these are the ones that were initially evaluated. So Engage New York was the, the current one, um, illustrative math from the publisher Kendall Hunt. Um, it is important to note, illustrative math is an open source curriculum, um, that multiple publishers have grabbed. Um, and so we are looking at the Kendall Hunt version of illustrative math. Uh, we looked at CPM, um, and we looked at HMH into AGA. Uh, and you can see, um, illustrative math and HMA both outscored, uh, the other two pretty significantly. Um, one of the major differences, um, into the two curriculums, um, on the surface level is illustrative math, while it has add-ons you can pay for, the base is free. Uh, it, it, it is open source from nonprofits, um, that gives access to schools, uh, that curriculum at, at no cost. You can add on additional costs if you choose. Um, HMH, uh, does not have a free version, it, it does operate on the paid subscription model of either digital license or consumables uh, for, for your students. Um, after that process, illustrative math was chosen, uh, to pilot and approved for a pilot, it was piloted, um, in Algebra One fully, um, and Algebra Two took pieces of the lessons a- and tried them out too, to make sure that it wasn't just good in Algebra One, but that they, they saw it as well. In November, uh, at that time, they had just finished up their first unit, and our math department wanted to make sure, you know, did we make the right choice? Like, we're, we're a month in, we've experienced this, we've tried it, now that we've actually dug in, let's, let's make sure, and let's look at some other materials, so we contacted, um, both Math Institute of Wisconsin um, and our CISA nine math expert, um, or specialist, and he gave us these two as the next best two he felt for us to look at, and so we also then sat down on a day and looked at Envision Math by Savas and Reveal Math by McGraw Hill. After looking at that, um, Reveal Math, uh, we felt did not meet the standard for what we wanted, um, and, and we did not think it was a quality curriculum for us. Envision, we thought had some really positive elements, um. It had a lot of extra support, almost too much, like bells and whistles that sorting through would have been probably pretty difficult. Um, that its digital platform was really strong, uh, but some of the major cons were navigation of that digital platform was not easy, especially on the, the students' end, um, because even after looking at the materials, our team was interested enough that they scheduled a demo to get a walkthrough with the rep, just to see, like, maybe this is something we should look at. Um, but once they got a look at it, especially on the student end, it wasn't very easy to navigate that digital platform. Um, the other difficult piece that our team did not like is all of the illustrative math materials are available in Microsoft Word options, so they can edit. None of these materials were editable, they would have to manipulate all of them, so if they wanted to specialize in assignment, they would have to go in and snip and edit. Um, so that, that piece for a teacher to be able to create a lesson that they wanted, um, outside of the script that Savas gives was, was more difficult. Um, and then, uh, it, it was just the, the problems themselves were very word-heavy, lacked strong, real-world contextual problems, um, and so we didn't think that it had the same level of critical thinking component that we saw with illustrative math. Um, so after that, uh, that is when they chose IM as, as their preferred program, um, and that led to, uh, the initial proposal to you guys in February, as far as the timeline goes.
If, if I'm not mistaken, when I called, they are totally linked with Wisconsin math standards.
They are aligned, yes.
Totally aligned, go.
So just some, a, a basic conclusion from our team of why they prefer illustrative math over the five different resources that they looked at. Um, their digital platform is easy to navigate, resources are easy for teachers to adapt, to be able to meet the needs of all their students. The level of rigor is very high, but there is also a strong component of support for struggling learners to be able to be in the exact same math class and still get something out of that. Um, while also providing strong critical thinking and problem-solving components. Um, and so it, it's, it's a program that we feel all students are really having access to learning math and engaging in math. Um, another thing that, that I find to be in, out of the ones that I looked at, this was the strongest and most transparent as far as resources for both students and families. Um, it's a hundred percent free, there's a family sections that, that parents can go to, click on, see everything for every unit, how to support your kids, what was taught today, what was important, videos to support your kids. Uh, parents can go into the student portal at any time and look at the student, uh, what was taught today, what the, the sample problems were. Um, and they can even see the base level of the teacher's side, there's, there's another level of teacher's side that you need to log in, but you can see everything to be able to support your child in their math journey. Um, through our first year of, of pilot, um, our, our teachers have seen an increase in local achievement in their classroom using local results in comparison of where students were in algebra a year ago, compared to where they are moving through this curriculum in the first one. Um, I mentioned the proven results in schools that have adopted. We really felt that this is out of the five or six that we've looked at, the best curriculum. Um, i- it's free, it's aligned, um, to the resources that were updated here in Wisconsin in twenty twenty-one. Um, a- and that's just kind of the overview. Um, one thing I, I would just show you that, so if you wanted to look yourself, this is the website, uh, IM dot Kendall Hunt dot com, if you go to, uh, the high school, you can launch this, and so all of this is free, so if you wanted to see what a student lesson looks like, you can click on Algebra One, you can click on any of this, um, and you can click on the lesson. Um, and you can look at it, uh, the same would be true of the family portal. Uh, so if a family wanted to see what their child was doing in algebra, there's family support materials for every unit that's provided. Um, so I just wanted to show you the website, so, uh, you could take a look if you had any further questions, or wanted to research what a lesson would look like, um, what's available to families. Uh, another component is, is this, um, curriculum is gaining enough momentum um, and support that Khan Academy has now fully aligned their Algebra One units to a separate illustrative mathematics. So this is just another free resource that our students and families and teachers can use, um, that allows a very personalized approach to our students' growth through math. Um, so this would align exactly to what is going on in our classrooms. Um, students can work on their own, if they're struggling in an area, it's an area for extra help. Um, and, uh, i- it's just another free resource that now has attached itself to this curriculum that would only further support, um, student growth, so.
And, and we have a teacher, Mr. Schub's here, you were one of the people that piloted, correct?
Yes, I piloted.
You wanna make any comments or anything?
Um, a lot of what Tom just showed in his presentation, he and I worked together on, so I don't have a lot to add, but I said I'd very be very willing to answer questions, but I can tell you I would not be at this board meeting if I did not feel strongly about this curriculum. So.
All right, quick question too, so, this is, we just looked at this at the high school level, this obviously would, I mean, it, long-term vision, this would roll out to the middle school and the elementary school, or the same platform, or do they not have that, or as?
It, do they have it, yes, um, but I, I think another piece of this conversation is, um, at the high school level, algebra is algebra, geometry is geometry, and it has been, right? The, what algebra looks like hasn't changed much, the level to which we expect students to understand and problem solve is different. So, w- we could adopt this at the high school, and it doesn't mean you have to adopt it K eight. Um, we, we feel that this would be a strong program for our high school regardless of what curriculum is being used below algebra.
Tommy, you mentioned that there were some additional costs if needed, what, what part could we run into where we might need that additional support?
So, i- if, if we, if a district were to choose, and some do, you could order like a consumable student workbook instead of using the digital version, um, and that would be at a cost, or you can simply choose to print the ones you're using, do digital. Um, that, that would be a local cost versus paying Kendall Hunt for the consumables.
Right now, I make photocopies, so if we don't buy the workbook, we make photocopies.
You could buy the, the teacher's edition, um, but again, it's available digitally. Um, you could buy professional development from Kendall Hunt, um, but not necessary or forced or included.
Is that a link for the staff?
Yeah, it would be for te- teacher training, um.
Thanks. What was the cost of the other curriculums, what was the range?
Uh, the, the one that we looked at initially, the HMH, um, it was, uh, I believe it was twenty-seven dollars a student for the digital license, um, and somewhere between thirteen and seventeen for the consumable, if you were to order that. Um, I was not.
Per student?
Yeah, I did not see quotes from the two we looked at in November, I only was involved on the demo side of things.
Are there other questions?
Yes, so, Brian, if you can answer, have you had eyes on this to see if this is helpful and compatible, um, it could be tailored for special education children?
So, DeeDee who's here, she's the co-teacher in the algebra class, and it has been able to for our students with disabilities to have access, so we can make adjustments to make sure we're still meeting SDI minutes and kids are accessing it within the class. I'll let DeeDee add any additional information, but she's the one co-teaching there.
Yeah, so the curriculum itself has strategies built in to the curriculum for low-level learners so that you're able to teach at a lower level and not try. so that you're able to teach at a lower level and not try to come up with them on your own. They give you some ideas of things that you can adapt the curriculum to so that you're still teaching that baseline, still the same information, just maybe at a lower level. But then on the opposite end, it has those same strategies built in for advanced learners. So it has those built in. You have your core curriculum, but then the things go right into it.
Tom, just one more question. You said you saw success with their school districts. Is there a way to kind of see that they've been using it for years? Some of these averages and what they've increased to since we've been seeing such a drop?
Yeah, so this the spreadsheet that was shared with me from Wausau Math or Wisconsin Math Institute, it had every district that they knew that had adopted it for a minimum of three years. And so that's where that eighty five percent, so of those eighty five percent of the school districts saw an increase from their previous results to year three of implementation. The average increase was a seven percent in somewhere like seven to eight percent increase per student in their achievement scores.
Other questions?
My question, just a comment. I'm not a teacher, I'm not an admin. I trust us fully. Thank you for your work. I will make a motion to approve.
Approve the IM curriculum? Do, is there a second?
I will second it.
Second motion by Stankowski, second by Kaiser. Any discussion?
Yeah, Dave had a question.
Oh, sorry, Dave.
I just wanted to ask DeeDee, you said it had adaptive strategies for both the low level and the high level learners that folks, okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard that. Thank you.
I'm just gonna add that I'm not gonna vote for it tonight just because I'd like to go in and research some of these components that were brought up some from the curriculum committee previously.
I understand.
Just to, I mean, to go through my understanding of it too. So our scores have continued to drop and we've fallen behind. Our students like this, our teachers approve of it, they're on board with it, um, our team supports it. Um, and if we don't do this, we've obviously explored other options because is there an alternative?
Well, your alternatives would be to either go back to the drawing board and consider doing something that's gonna be a.
Which it sounds like, I mean, we've gone through the hoops, we've explored the other options.
Or you're gonna continue down the path you're on right now with the curriculum you have.
Which is us having our store scores continue to drop.
One of my concerns with this was our math department has spent a great deal of time. And if we can entrust them to teach our kids, I think we can entrust them to pick the curriculum that would suit our students the best. That was my concern. My only hesitation is before was is if we were gonna lose our funding. And to me, that seems to be gone.
Yeah, I feel like this checks a lot of practices as far as being able to advance what our overall mission should be for the math department.
Any other discussions? Okay, uh, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Hi.
Tonyan Gorman?
No.
Landry Zebra?
No.
Donna Kaiser?
Yes.
Jessica Mapple?
No.
Megan Stankowski?
Yes.
Paul Lewinsky?
Yes.
Derek Mess?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twelve four, discussion, uh, twenty four, twenty five, membership audit results. Greg?
Yeah, this is just a discussion. Uh, we went through, uh, you get randomly selected by DPI every so many years to do a membership audit. This was our year to go through the membership audit. So as a result of that, uh, we did it. We were off by one student, which when you're counting eighteen hundred and fifty kids, one student is not exactly a large number. And it had to do with they were in a different situation. Um, so it doesn't impact anything with us, uh, in terms of funding because it's well within the margin of error, you could say, in the three year rolling average. So a lot of credit goes to Kerry and Rod for Kerry does a lot of work, is is very, uh, good at the counting. And then Rod, uh, helped oversee the audit. So those two did a great job on this.
We need no motions, just a discussion.
Correct. It's just the results.
Thank them for all their hard work.
Great job.
Thank you. All right, item twelve point five, uh, discussion of possible decision revision of board policy. Oh, one, six, seven point three, public comments at board meeting. Again, this is me. I'm at the city council meeting. And, um, I had about five people come up to me and say, why is the school board doing something different than the city and every other municipality that you represent? So at the city meeting, there are two clipboards in the back of the room. When you get there, you sign your name, your address, and do you want to speak on an agenda item? Or do you want to speak on a non-agenda item? And so that's their way of having the public speak. You don't have to fill out an electronic form, you don't have to do anything, you just come there. If you are not of a resident, you are not allowed to speak. You have to sometimes prove that, but there is no prior approval needed. I got lambasted by three people that said, why can't I go to a school board meeting and talk about something and I have to wait till it's on the agenda? So that's the discussion I'd like to have. I don't know what your feelings are.
Well, I think my feelings on that are, in my mind, the reasons might be is that, um, you know, parents or teachers, community members should go through the proper chain of command if they have an issue with something. That would be, I guess, my concern. And at that point, you know, if it's not been addressed, you know, you know, Greg, I'm sure would handle it, but.
But right now, they can do that now. They just have to fill out, the issue is some of them were older, they they didn't want to fill out the electronic form.
You know, I'm not so much opposed to that.
I even, when when Bernie Kramer spoke, he came over my house, I helped him fill it out.
Right.
I mean, it was very difficult for him to fill it out.
I think that part, you know, the timing of filling out the form doesn't really concern me, but I think anybody coming to speak on any topic could.
There's still limits. They can't personally attack anybody. They get three minutes.
Well, we know.
We'll stop them.
They don't sign up ahead of time.
Well, that that is a little bit, just to echo up with Landry saying, it's a little bit difficult to stop somebody in the middle of Khan. You know, you don't want to ever blindside your administrators and have or any staff member publicly. And it's very difficult to shut somebody down because then it looks like you're trying to curtail what they're saying or cut them off. And you don't know what they, so I think if they're, the online format, that's difficult, we can look at that. But I I think it's fair to our administrative staff to make sure that was handled properly, it did follow the proper chain. And it could have been addressed before it even comes to the board because this is a meeting of the board. First, I mean, we're like, we're doing it in public, but this is a meeting of the school board.
Greg, what are your feelings on this?
I've been involved in all parts of this. You know, I guess I would say it's up to the board to decide how you want to handle that. I mean, I've seen the, uh, this is the first district I've been at where there's a requirement to sign up online. I've been involved in, uh, a district that doesn't require, has you sign up at the time and you don't have to say, speak on anything on the agenda. I was on board of a technical college where they had to speak on agenda items only. So I've seen it in both occasions. You know, the biggest thing is, is if people come to speak, uh, you know, if it's not on the agenda, well, number one, you don't answer them either way. If they have, you know, you just refer to committee, refer to a future agenda item or refer to administration to answer, or you just don't do anything.
Just to comment on that, one of the things every township does in city, they make it noted that if it's not an agenda item, we are not commenting on it.
And even if it's an agenda item, you don't necessarily comment on it, you just comment on it when you get to that agenda item. So I mean, if you're asking me my opinion, uh, I would just say whatever the board decides is what we'll do.
And to break on, um, Paul's comment about the townships. Now, when I went to the townships, um, to the meetings, um, I got to the meeting and I talked to the chairman and I said, may I speak at the meeting? That was on the referendum item. And, um, they said, yeah, you have this much time or you have this much. And, um, so both townships were the same. As long as I came and I told them what I was speaking on, I was allowed to have whatever their limit time was, three, four minutes.
Your township, that's why I asked it before. I mean, I researched every one we represent, Knowlton, everybody does it this way. They have a clipboard or something to sign up in the back and then you can speak. And almost every one of them has an agenda item or a non-agenda. Matter of fact, most of them welcome people to come and speak.
Well, I don't think the board would really turn anyone away if they showed up and wanted to speak. I mean, sure, if I got out of control, but has that ever happened? Have you turned anyone away?
We've had this happen three times where there were people that filled out the form and it never got to us. And they were like, I guess I got denied. And they didn't get denied. We never got the form. And we went from when we switched secretaries, it was going to her email.
It sounds like it's more the online discrepancy then, which I don't think anybody has an issue with eliminating that.
And could there be two parts of this, like, oh, you know, maybe we look at our, we look at that process?
And we don't have to, guys, we don't have to make a decision. I just want to, like I said, I went to the, my brother's the mayor, I went to the city thing and they're looking at, why do you do it differently? Why can't I speak? And I'm like, I couldn't answer that. I said, I don't know why.
Well, and it might be a little different too in our setting because of, you know, let's say you're a parent and you have a concern, you know, they need that chain of command might look a little differently here than it does in a township.
I I like to, decisions like this, I like to try to break these down into segments. So to me, you have two segments to decide. The first segment you need to decide is do you want to make people sign up in advance or can they sign up when they get here? Right? That's the first, to me, that's the first question you need to answer. The second question then you need to answer is can they talk on anything or can they only talk on agenda items? So from my lens, you have two decisions to make. And then policy can be adjusted or policy doesn't have to be adjusted if you say we love it the way it is. I'm not trying to lead you anywhere on this conversation. I'm just saying to me, there's two conversations with which we, the two decisions that need to be made to direct where we're going in the future with this.
Yeah, I agree.
Thoughts, discussion? If somebody wants to make a motion, I'll take that.
I'll make a motion to remove the online, um, submission requirement.
And keep everything the same?
I was gonna make two separate.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, in in this case, Megan, I think we can make one motion. I'm just saying that the board needs to dis, well, we can make it in two separate ones. That'd probably be the easiest.
So we have a motion to remove the online portion of the public forum. I see, because we have a second from this. Any discussion?
Do you want to possibly, because you gotta bring back the policy.
Yeah, we we're gonna have that.
I mean, theoretically, yeah, theoretically, you could almost not even necessarily make a decision tonight, but provide me guidance of how you want me to bring the policy back. Because the policy has to go through a formal reading anyways versus it's not like tonight, this is going into play for next month. We have to amend the policy first.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend it to, um, to remove the online portion and then pending policy.
Approval at future meeting.
And do you still want a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the policy to remove the online and then prior approval from the superintendent with the policy change. We have a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, administrative item thirteen.
Well, just, is there a discussion on the second half of this?
Or you leave it.
Or you can leave it the same. That's, I mean, I'm just saying.
What does the second part mean? I mean, is it?
The second part is this, so right now, Donna, your policy states that you can only speak on an agenda item. So they fill out the form, name, address, what agenda item are you speaking on? Some boards say you can come speak on anything as long as it's not a personal attack on a on a staff member, an employee or a student. You get into confidentiality issues. So the second half of this conversation or decision needs to be, are we making a decision that they can talk on anything? Or are we saying, no, it has to be only on an agenda item? So that that is the second. Right now, it's only on an agenda item.
But is there some way you can incorporate that it can be, but it cannot be personal, can't be involve a teacher?
I'm pretty sure that's in policy that way and you can write that. Yeah, and it's it's basically, it's it's against the law, well, not against the law. It's you can't be done in open session.
Right. Well, could you make sure that we attach our policy link to the public forum section of the board so people can?
Yes, I think it is.
If you're doing it on a clipboard, then it should be there.
I would say it's usually a question at the top.
I think to Diane's point, it's key to remember that this is a meeting of the board.
That's right.
Because technically, we shouldn't even be engaging in the audience.
Correct.
However, we have been, um, but that's not a good practice. So I think it helps to make sure that you're sticking with the agenda. But then if people have other concerns outside of that, they go through, um, up through, uh, administration or what have you. That should be a good practice that we have been using in the last few years and it has been working.
Yeah, to your point, where I've seen it done before is the policy is there in one of those plastic
Yeah.
things. So the policy is right above that. And then if somebody signs up, the board president says, just a reminder, you can't blah, 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 blah.
That's gotta be part of the speech like we do right now. If you are not allowed to do this, there's three minutes, I will cut you off.
Yeah.
And if you get mad at me, that's your choice.
Yeah. So, anyway, I digress. So the second half.
Do we have a motion?
I guess I would just make a, and now we can discuss and roll call, but I would just make a motion to direct staff to revise the policy to open it up to any, um, items outside of the, including the agenda and outside of it.
We have a motion to include items on the agenda and outside of the agenda. We have a second. Discussion.
With the premise that it has to be.
Yeah, that's in the policy.
Yeah, following, following along with the other guidelines.
That's in the policy.
Yes.
Who's the second?
Megan.
Yeah, Stankowski. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I think I'm gonna do a roll call vote, just to make sure.
Diane Zebra? Gorman, oh my gosh.
Oh.
This is Diane.
Holandra?
No.
Donna?
Yes.
Jessica?
No.
Megan?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item thirteen, administrative reports.
I just wanted to touch on a couple of things, uh, in my report. Uh, I'll let you read on the building project stuff. Uh, things are progressing along. First bid pack is out. Second bid pack is getting ready to go out and then the final one, uh, will be coming out soon. Um, so things are gonna start picking up here, uh, pretty soon. The other thing I really wanted to just draw your attention to is the groundbreaking date. Um, I'm pretty open on this. We have to get something on the books pretty soon so we can start getting it out. My recommendation would be to tie it into another event we're already doing at the school, like open house. So you don't have to do groundbreaking when before the ground is broken and you don't have to wait until it's broken to do it. It's, you're basically putting a shovel in the ground and throwing it six inches. So, um, the matter is, is do you want to, you know, I, like I said, in the past, when I've done groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings, we've tried to cut, have it be a part of another event so you can have a reason for people to attend.
I think that's wonderful.
Okay, so I'll I'll continue plugging along with that. I just wanted to let you, give you a little update on on the on the budget. Um, we're roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the red right now, but I want everybody to understand that's not uncommon this time of year. So we don't need to panic. We are fine. Um, we are still in a good spot, but I just wanted to give you an update, uh, on where we are. We have a couple of big things left that are gonna impact it. Obviously, we have to finish hiring, um, which is gonna have a swing on it and 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 and, uh, health insurance, uh, selections, uh, whether or not they take health insurance or not is A. And then the other thing is what the state does, um, for this. So I'm not concerned about where we are at all. And then I just wanted to touch on the last two things that I have a booklet. So thank you, Brad, for running upstairs. I forgot to bring these down with me. Uh, we went and did a site visit May first. We went to Whitehall and Levis Strum. Both schools are deeply involved in personalized learning with the use of computer programming along an AI concept, uh, to engage kids. Uh, it is phenomenal work. I've been involved with those two individuals for a number of years, having these conversations. Uh, we're actually doing, piloting some of that in our building right now to some success. So we actually are part of a group called Lift Offs. Uh, so I'll pass this out to you. It's a, uh, it's a consortium of schools that are just kind of looking at a way, a different way to approach teaching and learning today as as the brains of kids are different from the brain, our brains and development of our brains. Um, so we're gonna, so I just, I'll give you a copy of these afterward. They're just kind of promotional materials of Lift Offs and and we're really excited about it. We're actually gonna be taking our CTE department back to Whitehall and Levis Strum on Tuesday. Uh, Whitehall has an amazing innovation center that's, uh, industry four point O. They've got kids that are programming, uh, mini autonomous tractors, Mars rovers, uh, drones, things like that. So, yeah, we're gonna go take, bring our, take our CTE department, go take a look at that. And then Levis Strum, if you're anywhere close to involved in this concept, uh, Levis Strum runs cargo manufacturing, which is one of the most well-known in the country concepts around that. So we're gonna go talk with them about how they do that with our CTE department as we move and we're working very closely with Mia Schmeele, Mozeney grad, Mozeney resident, who works at CISA nine on all of this.
Awesome. Any other administrative reports that we need to hear?
Could could I just get verification for graduation? I have, um, Mr. Bauer, Donna Kaiser, Paul, is anybody else planning on attending, just so we have it correct?
Thank you.
I I do want to add, I went to the greenhouse. I'm very impressed. I thought it was fantastic. I, I do wanna add, I went to the greenhouse. I'm very impressed. I thought it was fantastic.
Yeah, very, very. I checked out.
So it was so nice to see that the money that was spent, it upgraded, it's finally being used properly, so.
Beautiful plans.
And they have a ton of ideas for next year on how to make it better, so.
And what a great community service.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, then we're looking at going back to the city to possibly do the city baskets.
That'd be awesome. That would be awesome.
Fantastic.
Okay.
And for not, I just basically forced the students.
Thanks for the notification. Um, any other administrative reports? Okay, item fourteen, other reports. Fourteen point one, the, um, Losby report.
Well, there is an upcoming event. Um, actually, um, it's in Stevens Point this year. So July eleventh and twelfth, it's Summer Learning Symposium, Practical Solutions to Real Issues. So you can, um.
Is that at the Holiday Inn?
Yeah, at the Holiday Inn. So if you're interested, we do it in Green Bay. July eleventh and twelfth, and it does say, they save the date for the convention, January twenty-first through the twenty-third on the flyer.
So if you have an interest in going to that, the, the thing in Stevens Point, just let Jackie know, uh, and we can get you registered for that. Assuming we aren't gonna need hotels. So if you wanna go, just shoot Jackie an email, uh, and we'll get you, uh, signed up for it.
Anything else, Clender?
That is all I have.
Thank you very much. Item fourteen point two, CISA nine?
Okay, um, Al Betri, his contract was renewed for two more years, so Al will, Betri will still be the CISA nine administrator. Um, Rhine Land Apprentice, Three Lakes and Elko all passed their referendums in April. So, um, I know I know two of the administrators and they didn't pass in November, but they did pass now, uh, in April.
Were those capital or?
No, they were.
Uh, I'm sure.
Uh, Kitty Guyer, a lot of different ones, no Kitty too, and she did not run for, well, she did run for reelection, but she did not win. And so, um, she was thanked for her, thanked for her years on the, on the CISA board. Um, let's see. Terry Palin was recognized for his special education and, um, for, her innovative ways of working with the different, um, school districts in special ed. And, um, Marathon, um, uh, did, uh, hire a new superintendent. And so that was also something that was shared in the CISA news, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Item fifteen, future agenda items.
Yeah, I forgot to put that on there, so I apologize. Uh, what we typically have in, in June is, uh, annual WA membership. Um, the employee handbook is typically on there, but we talked about during our, uh, personnel committee uh, that we're gonna maybe look at the employee handbook in June and then bring it back in July for approval, so that'll probably get bumped down a month. Uh, and then we just have to approve transfers to zero out accounts and approval of, of preliminary budgets. And then the bo- uh, the admin team will update you kind of on what our June in-service days were like, and then update you on, uh, opportunity we have in late June to go as an admin team on a, uh, retreat that DPI is funding, so we're gonna be able to go on our, uh, opportunity to work with DPI and more or less ourselves to plan out some of these things. No, we are going to land the lakes.
Oh, that's close.
Oh, it's close enough.
Yeah.
Um, any bo- any items for board members?
I just also wanted to comment, sorry, Paul, that we are also administratively doing a book study on the Anxious Generation.
Oh, oh, good.
Well, we're gonna start, well, they just got the books. Part of our retreat up there is going to be having that conversation about the book.
Awesome. Is there, in board members, any items that you would like to see on the agenda? Any?
Not at the moment.
Good, thank you. All right, we will move into closed executive session item sixteen. We will discuss section nineteen point eight-five, Consider Employment Promotion Compensation Performance Evaluation Data of Any Public Employee. Um, we will talk about support staff letters of intent, support staff compensation, and island staff letters of intent. But that will take a five-minute break and come back. Roll call vote.
No, you need a motion.
A motion, thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Gorman?
I'll second.
Second by Z- um, Zebra, and I think we do a roll call vote.
It said twenty-five, twenty-five.
We'll go with Zebra first, the real Zebra. The real Zebra, please. Jessica?
Yes.
Megan?